than what I see this afternoon. And I do hope that we can have a great conversation. As we gather here this afternoon, the urgency to address climate change and even the pressing needs that we see across the world cannot be overstated. And the role of carbon markets as part of that eclectic mix in our toolbox cannot be overemphasized. In this session, we will be delving into the critical nexus of policy coherence, corporate engagement, and societal inclusion, all essential for realizing the promise of carbon markets that are not only effective but also equitable and transparent. Now, esteemed panelists, who I will be introducing in a moment, bring diverse perspectives and expertise to the table, and together we aim to chart a path forward towards a sustainable future. So as you listen through this session, I would encourage you to engage and my panelists too in a dynamic exchange of ideas to challenge conventional wisdom and inspire actionable solutions as we navigate the complexities of high-integrity carbon markets. Ladies and gentlemen, allow me to welcome my panel here, and I will just introduce them in order from right next to me. And here we have the first panelist I'm going to introduce is Mr. Sunny Trin. He's a co-founder and chief executive officer, Dev Stream. He's the one that writes here. Next to him is Mr. Augustine Kenduia, deputy director of climate change here in Kenya. The third person I'm introducing is Philippe Zawati. You saw him a little bit earlier. He's the CEO of MiRova. And next to him, I'm going to introduce Tracy Lane. Tracy's associate director, KPMG, here in East Africa. The next panelist is Jenny Pitko. She's right over there. She's a member of parliament of Finland. And last, second to last, I should say, Professor Chang Li, director, Green Inclusive Carbon Neutralities Centre. And finally, Gabriel Labatt, co-chair of the Expert Panel Integrity Council for the voluntary carbon markets. Could you just give a round of applause to my eclectic panel that is going to help us this afternoon? And we'll just begin the conversation closer home. Augustine Kenduia, I introduced him, deputy director, climate change here in Kenya. I want to start with you, sir, because Kenya has gone ahead of many countries in terms of putting in place legislation to deal with the whole question of carbon credits and the whole carbon market. The Climate Change Act was amended in the last quarter of last year. Give us a sense where you see the challenges, the state of play as it were with regard to carbon markets from the perspective of a developing country such as Kenya?
Yeah, thank you very much, Joy. Ladies and gentlemen, carbon credits, and especially the high-integrity carbon credits, is what all of us are expected, we're expecting to see. Because as a country, we are really actually from the impacts of climate change. And one sure way of addressing this is through implementing our nationally determined contribution. And these NDCs, one mechanism of implementing our NDC is through the carbon market regime. And therefore, the issue now is how do we progress the carbon market regime in the work of climate change? So for us as a country, we amended our Climate Change Act to incorporate the carbon market in a bid to implement our nationally determined contribution, which requires around 62 billion USD to implement. And we thought one of the climate financing available to us is through the carbon market. But as we rightly say, it has to be high-integrity, a carbon market where transparency has to be there. In fact, there is no point of actually engaging in carbon market which is shrouded in a lot of opaqueness. It has to be highly transparent. It has to be a carbon market scheme where everyone feels that the trading or the exchange of whatever is happening within the carbon market space is understandable to everyone. So the carbon market legislation that we are working on now as a country is actually the carbon market regulations to implement the amended act. And these carbon market regulations has provided for mechanisms in which we are supposed to, one, have engagement on the supply side of carbon credit. We must have an engagement on the demand side of carbon credit and also look around what happens within the carbon market itself. So on the supply side, we are stressing high integrity in terms of avoiding double counting, ensuring that there is proper corresponding adjustment, ensuring that there is proper reporting, and ensuring that leakage, carbon grid leakage, is actually managed and reported. And on the side of demand side, we also expect proper standardization, proper checkings or check-offs in terms of carbon market standards. And therefore, we expect a market that is highly transparent, a market where even the price is seem to really favor both sides, whether it is the demand side or the supply side. So this is actually what we are currently doing as a country. And I believe even developing nation also, their problem basically is the pricing of this carbon credit. Sometimes we are not sure how the pricing is done. We don't even know how much it is. So again, we need to have some kind of consistency and something that you can predict, predictable kind of a market, where when you get involved in it, you are able actually to predict and say, yes, this is the market I'm getting into. It's a sure way of mitigating against climate change. And whatever benefits we get will now be plowed back into the communities for supporting sustainable development within those communities. Without that, without the blowing back of the proceeds to support sustainable development, which will actually come in handy for addressing issues of adaptation, then again, the issue of high integrity and transparency is also compromised. So this is our call as a developing nation, that let us engage in high-integrity carbon market where transparency is key, high reporting, avoiding double counting, and ensuring that we have a predictable price for carbon credit. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do hope that we'll get some time to delve deeper into some of the specific things that Kenya is doing. But Professor Li, there are a number of questions that Mr. Kenduia here is raising with regard to the perspectives from this part of the world, basically talking about whether it is in terms of the level of knowledge, the level transparency. We said we don't know a lot of things. And I know China has been developing its carbon markets for quite some time now, from 2021, I think, perhaps even beyond. And China now has really the world's largest carbon market, if you think about the number of, the volume of emissions covered. What sort of practical lessons would you lay on the table from a developing country perspective, but one that has really gone ahead in terms of developing these markets?
Hi, thank you, moderator. I would like to brief you about the recent progress of China National Carbon Emission Trading Market. Right before I come here today, yesterday, actually, our vice environment minister, Mr. Zhao Yingming, gave a very comprehensive policy briefing at the State Council Information Office. So I would like to read the report. I'm sorry, my bad memory. Mr. Zhao Yingming said, as you know, that the China National Carbon Emission Trading Market officially opened in July 2021 and has now successfully completed two compliance circles. The first compliance circle is from 2019 to 2020, and the second one is from 2021 and 2022. Currently, the National Carbon Emission Trading Market covers about 5.1 billion tons of annual carbon CO2 emission, including 2,257 key emission units, and has become the largest carbon market covering greenhouse gas emission globally. Data showed that by end of 2023, the total volume of the National Carbon Emission Trade Market reached 440 million tons with a turnover of about 24.9 billion RMB yuan, approximately 3.5 billion US dollar. The volume of the transactions in the second compliance period increased by 19% compared to the first compliance period, and the turnover increased by 89% compared to the first period. So this is the current situation of carbon trading market in China, and we found that from the initial 48 RMB per tonne to about 80 RMB per tonne, an increase of about 66%. So as we know that this is an increasing market, but we also noticed that there's some problem of falsifying emission data has emerged in practice. So China launched its legislation to regulate the carbon trading market and announced in the February 2003 this year, and will be implemented in this May. So these experiences from the practice from China could be a good example, and we bring experiences to other developing country in future.
Wow, thank you very much, Professor Li. And by the way, I don't know whether you realize that the moment he started speaking, the rain stopped. Did anyone see that? Anyway, let me go to my next panelist, and that's going to be Jenny. Jenny is a member of parliament in Finland. And from the perspective of legislation, I'm sure you've had reflections about what sort of policies ought to be in place to make sure that these markets are truly addressing the concerns, such as what we heard in the case of Kenya about transparency, but more broadly ensuring that these markets are actually equitable, they are not exploitative, they really benefit the broadest majority of people?
Well, I think we definitely need regulation and guidelines for these markets to work and be fair and environmentally friendly as well. In Finland and in EU, there has been much uncertainty around the production of carbon credits and claims related to them. In Finland, we did these national guidelines for the carbon markets one year ago, and they are based on internationally established minimum criteria. We are also trying to solve the problem with double counting on national and private sector accounting. I think the national level guidelines are very good for the local actors, but of course the focus needs to be on international level. From Finnish perspective, this of course mainly means the EU level, but of course on the international level as well. EU-level criteria for carbon removal certification actually took a step forward just last week. So that's a good thing. This is a regulatory that covers not just the carbon removal but also soil-related emission reduction achieved by carbon farming. And it aims to allow landowners to receive income in exchange for carbon storage produced in agriculture and forestry. And I think in EU at the moment, these forest and soil-based carbon storages are the big issue right now, because to be able to be carbon neutral by 2050, which is the EU goal, and in Finland, we are aiming to be carbon neutral by 2035, we need a lot bigger carbon sinks. And right now, the land use sector has actually shrink. So we do need good practices and good new ways to strengthen that. And one of the problems in this field is at the moment is the greenwashing, as we all know that the claims are made. And actually, the studies shows that people in Finland doesn't trust those claims that companies are making at the moment. So we definitely need more regulation on that one. And I'm very happy that EU has also ongoing legislation process about the green claims, and that is going to be solved in EU level in that way correctness of environmentally friendly claims is in the heart of the carbon markets. One needs to be able to trust the claims. From point of view of a global customer, the possibility and promise of fair, functional, high-integrity carbon market is very welcome, and the transparency is important part of the process.
So you've mentioned very practical things certainly in Finland, but also at the level of the EU. How well is it working right now? What did you say is the level of success in terms of these practical measures that you put in place?
Well, we are still in the process on making those regulatory. So the process is in that way, it's very beginning, even though there are like lots of companies at the moment are already providing services and so on. But I think that if we want to have the carbon market as the solution for the climate crisis, we need like stable regulatory, and we are still in the process in that. But it's good to see that lots of companies are interested in investing in carbon markets, and that's definitely what we need to make the gap smaller between the funding and aims in climate.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zawati, there was, I think the question that Jenny was talking about of the trust, you know, when companies make the claims, that the level of trust many times is not where it ought to be. I wonder what you think the financial sector, for instance, and companies more generally can do to, one, build that trust a lot more, but more importantly, ensure transparency and accountability in the whole system?
Okay. I think the financial system is a very important part of the architecture that we need to build, and it could help to build trust. And more especially, we think that the investment managers could be an important link between the supply and the demand in the market. It depends a lot about what you call market, you know? Because a lot of people think that the carbon market should be, or even the biodiversity market, my biodiversity credit market, should be a kind of, you know, fully liquid and flexible market when you can exchange everything on a single marketplace, which is clearly basically absolutely not the case. We are speaking about very different projects with different prices, with different costs, with different stakeholders. And so that means that all this need a strong organization, and that it's clearly not the kind of market that you can see in the, I don't know, equity or fixed income market. It's much more close to an infrastructure market, you know? It's a clean infrastructure for nature. So what do we do as an investment manager? We make a link between project developers on the ground and the demand, which comes from big corporates. And that's the interesting part today, is that there is a big interest, a lot of willing from the big corporation in the world, and more especially the one who have a lot of money today, meaning especially, for example, the areas of tech and luxury, and all these sector are already willing to contribute. The point is, do we want to work with everybody? Is it possible for every company to make a claim in terms of carbon credits? Of course not. And this is what we can bring also in terms of transparency on the market, integrity of the demand. For example, at MiRova, we worked with big companies like Orange, like Kering, like Loxitan. They have providing us with mandate with a couple of hundred million euros to invest in order to create, to invest in projects, pre-finance carbon credit that they will use then later on to offset their emission. We have decided at MiRova that we wouldn't work in this area with companies without a strong SBTI trajectory target, because we think that clearly we should be clearly fighting against any risk of greenwashing. And so this is a part of the integrity of the demand, the demand side integrity. And this is very important that we share some very clear rules on this. And then, of course, there is a question of the integrity of the supply. And then we had to convince this big corporate that it will have been very negative for them, and it will create a lot of reputation risk for them to buy bad quality carbon credits. And they have listened to us, and we agreed to put, because at the end of the day, it's a question of price, to put the price of the tonne of carbon at a level where we can finance very good projects, not only in terms of carbon sink, but also with co-benefits in terms of biodiversity and social co-benefits. But at the end of the day, we see us much more as an impact investor, trying to find very good project, investing in impact, creating impact, and then using the carbon credit as a tool to finance the project that we find already useful and need an investment.
All right, thank you. Let me come to you, Tracy. You come from the perspective of an auditing consulting firm, and I was waiting for the rains to subside for me to ask this question. Just how big are the, this carbon markets we are talking about, particularly in Africa or even in this East African region? And how do we get businesses to get involved in these markets, but in that sweet spot where they promote economic development, but also take care of the questions around environmental sustainability?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. I think on the question of the size of the African carbon markets, I mean, there's no definite answer here, not least because of the many different variables at play in terms of how the carbon markets are developing. However, the African Carbon Markets Initiative, which is a nonprofit that was launched at COP27, they have ambitions for the African carbon market to produce around 300 million credits annually by 2030, and to unlock $6 billion in revenue by 2030. So they have high ambitions, and I think that's grounded in real possibilities. In terms of East Africa, East Africa is already very active in carbon markets, especially Kenya, Uganda, Rwanda, they have quite high numbers of carbon projects already, but Tanzania also, Ethiopia as well. So there's really already a lot of engagement, but still certainly more opportunity to scale that. So it's really quite clear that Africa has a lot to offer in terms of supply across a number of different categories. So for example, Africa, agriculture, forestry, and other land use, waste management, energy, both small scale and large scale, and even some new emerging tech-based solutions. So under the right conditions, Africa can really be one of the largest suppliers or providers of carbon credits internationally. And then therefore, it could also be one of the largest recipients of carbon finance to channel into its own development and climate priorities, which I think is a critical factor. In terms of trying to actually size the carbon market in Africa, I think that will really depend on maybe three critical factors, and that's the evolution of the international carbon market rules under Article Six of the Paris Agreement, and how countries decide to engage with that. Also, secondly, the broadening landscape of use cases for carbon credits in corporate sustainability strategies, and there's some kind of evolving approaches there. And then also the stance of African host country governments on how they're going to engage with the carbon markets, and how that will also translate into the enabling environment internally, so the policy environment and other conditions for investment. But I think on all of those, we really have, you know, reasons for optimism. In terms of how can businesses or enterprises in developing countries be encouraged to participate in the carbon markets, I think that will come down to clear rules, very clear rules of engagement on all sides, as well as access to capital, which we've discussed a bit already. That includes both capital from multilateral development banks to help mitigate risk and some blended finance structures, but also capital from local commercial banks to help with upfront capital costs for investment in carbon projects.
Thank you, and I do hope we can come back to you in a few moments. Gabriel Labatt, he's the co-chair of the Expert Panel Integrity Council for the voluntary carbon markets. You've listened to the concerns, some of them expressed in this room from the developing country perspectives, for instance, and many that I'm sure you hear about out there. What is the council doing towards addressing some of these challenges to ensure that these markets are not as supportive, really, not exploitative, if you like?
The council, the Integrity Council, is bringing partners, people from all corners of the voluntary carbon market, and also many of those there are also active participants in Article Six. The theory of change that we have there is that I hear problems about carbon pricing and scale. Our approach is that if we are able to ensure integrity in this market, scale will follow. So integrity is key to us. We have representatives from standards, from indigenous people, local communities, from buyers, project developers, international organizations. And believe me, all these group of people that are involved in the market, they do understand that integrity has to improve, that what we have here is not scalable. So that's the core tenet of what we do. I invite you to check our webpage. We, after a couple of years of discussions, we have published what we called the Core Carbon Principles. These principles have been picked up by a number of governments, the UK government, the US government through the US Exchange Commission, government of Singapore, as references for what integrity means in the market. Now, there is not a lot of debate when we go over the macro of what a good carbon credit should be. It should be additional, should be permanent, carbon should be well-quantified, social and environmental safeguards must be strong, et cetera, et cetera. The challenge actually begins when you want to know the fine print of that. You know, what does additionality mean for renewable energy in middle-income country? How much permanence you need? Do you really need a thousand years? Well, there are some tipping points, some of them really badly, that may come in 40 So that's a key discussion. The council has produced what we called an assessment framework. We are going through an evaluation of credits, how they are in the market. We will publish what we call a floor, meaning don't buy below that. And we expect that this consensus we are having actually will be translated into buyers. And we would like to see the private sector investing in carbon credits that have all these conditions, and that money flows to developing countries. Again, I want to reemphasize, if we don't have integrity, we will not have a scale. If we not have quality, it will be very difficult to raise the price. What we are discussing in the Council for Voluntary Carbon Markets would also be a challenge in Article Six. Whatever we approve in 6.4 should have sufficient quality. Actually, the discussions at COP27 Actually, the discussions at COP28, to a great extent, broke down because of differences about how we were going to ensure quality in Article Six. So in summary, we expect in the next two years, three years, to be able to have this consensus out there about what quality is, which type of credit categories are okay to buy, which others you should be very careful. And we expect that that effort towards quality will be translated into greater flow of funds to developing countries.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I still have one panelist here who hasn't said a word and is going to do that in a moment. But I also just want to notify you that in a short while, we'll be opening the floor for a few questions so that we make this interactive. So you can be thinking about that. It won't be too many because we don't have a lot of time. But I'll come to you just now, Sunny. You've heard Gabriel talking about some of the perspectives from the council. I wonder, as someone who is a key player and innovator in this space, what you see as the trajectory in the development of this voluntary market, but also picking from where the Honorable Jenny left off, where there is the place of regulation, but then there's also, so just creating this mix, a healthy one, between regulated, unregulated, but still keeping in mind that this market, the concern was raised here about transparency, about effectiveness. Where do you see this going from where you sit?
Thank you for the question. So in order for us to come even close to meeting our net zero goals, we need to expand the carbon credit market much more than it is today. If you take a look at the carbon credit market, majority of credits today have come from nature-based solutions. And there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, it's absolutely necessary, but to keep us at the current level we're at. And there's a long way to go beyond that. And so what we need to do is take a look at where the source of the problem lies. And let me share a stat with you. Over half of the global emissions comes from the top three countries. So wouldn't it make sense to come and start looking at solutions for those countries? And so what I'm referring to is infrastructure, buildings. And earlier today, I was real excited to hear a couple of presenters talk about that. And, you know, I want to share a couple of stats with you right around the infrastructure. So the average commercial building, every square foot emits roughly about 66 pounds of CO2. It's about this big. What's really scary is that at a global level, every month, we're producing enough buildings to fill the city the size of New York, every month. Think about emissions, the amount of emissions that comes out of that. And you take a look at the cement production for those buildings. Every minute, at a global level, we're producing more than 8,000 tonnes of cement, which produces more than 6,500 tonnes of CO2. And then you look at the transportation infrastructure. Just in the US alone, ground transportation emits over 1.8 billion tonnes of CO2. The good news is, though, we have technology that addresses all these problems. So myself and my company, Devstream, we believe that the technology needed to solve global climate change exists today or will come about in the near future. The challenge is, though, these technologies come at a cost. So if you want to use something a little bit greener, right? So we work with a company that has green cement that produces 90% less emissions. Well, it comes at a cost, right? For the transportation issue, there's electric vehicles. Well, you need to create a structure with EV chargers. Again, that comes at a cost. And this is where carbon credits come in play. If we increase the value of carbon credits and really make them more acceptable across these technology infrastructure, well, it can bridge that gap and at some point even make it profitable. So think about it, keep it simple. Whether it's nature-based or technology-based, if you make it profitable to do good, people will do good. It's really that simple. And this is where carbon credits come in play. If you make it valuable enough, it will make it easy to do good. And I'll give you one example. We're doing a nature-based project in Ecuador right now where we're taking 260,000 hectares of indigenous Amazon rainforest and we protected them from oil developers. And how we did that was we showed the indigenous population that if you kept the trees alive, you would actually make more money than chopping and cutting it down. It really was that simple. We do the same thing with all the other infrastructure. This is how we move forward. And so that kind of ties back to what the other panels were talking about, too. How do we get the value up and how do we get more accepted? And that ties to technology, but also the transparency. And we have the technology built today, whether it's using blockchain or AI or Web 3.0. If you make the data more transparent, more trustworthy and more predictable, then the investors are going to come in. Because really, carbon credits, it's an asset and you have to look at it that way. And this asset revolves around data. How do you generate carbon credits? It's data. Use data to figure out the impact level and how much carbon is being sequestered or reduced. And that's how you generate carbon credits. If that data is trusted and is predictable, well, financial services will come in.
Wow. Thank you very much. I promise that we will take some questions. Do we have people who are ready to ask a few questions? We prioritize questions over comments for the time being. So there's one here, there is two there, right behind you, there are two others. So let's take like four or so and see where we go from there. So this, right here in front, and then we'll take three more just behind you. Yeah, so you could ask, we'll take the questions together. You can direct them to anybody you choose.
Hi, my name's Mina Malde and I'm from Altec Consultants in Kenya. But I was trained by Sida in Sweden for carbon credits and for wind and development. So my question is to you all. If we started a project nine years ago, we gave lots of retrofits for LED lighting in companies which are fairly big. Do I get carbon credit when I register the project? Or can I backdate it for carbon credit to the year that they were installed? Because obviously, there's improvement in carbon. Does that make sense, the question I asked?
No, if we'll just take them and then we can answer them together. Yes, just take note of that, please. Yes. Let's go to the next one.
Thank you. I have a more simplified question. Is the price and the value of carbon is equal? And probably that is our starting point. Oh, I'm sorry. Is the price and the value, the economic value of carbon is equal? And this is something that I think in designing any framework, the price and the value have to have some kind of ballpark of equality. This is my first question. A second question. Wouldn't be the supplier of carbon credit be depending on on the composition of the ecosystem to be able to claim the nature ecosystem-based management? On the demander for carbon market, wouldn't we be dependent on their kind of inventory of existing carbon history and the source, stationary versus mobile? So these are fundamental questions, nothing related to more advanced narrative that you presented. Back to you.
Okay, let's take two more. Yes, there's a lady back there.
Thank you, Fiona Napier from Nature Finance. I'm concerned on the question around integrity and the time that it is thought to get surety on quality of carbon credits. You mentioned three years and I think, wow, that's far too long. When we've got markets, when we have governments who are wanting to get markets going, such as the government of Kenya, we need to work as fast as possible to install as much confidence back into the market. So I'd like to understand what is going to hold up the discussion and agreement on quality. Thanks.
All right, just one more, then we can come back here.
Thanks a lot.
That's it? Okay, yes.
Thanks a lot. David Myel from Nexpho is a corporate consulting company for strategy and environment in Europe. So the first question is, it's nice to be transparent and together. Next, especially like now we have the Corporate Sustainable Reporting Directive in Europe. And the second question is like, we were already having like carbon market trading schemes in Europe with Kyoto Protocol. How to actually establish a working, functioning carbon market trading system? Thank you.
Okay. No, we'll take the next round. So let's see, I don't know where we start. Because Sunny, I saw you nodding at the very first question about backdating or whether, I think they did some retrofits and that sort of thing. So she's wondering whether, because they've done lots of improvements. Are they backdating or does it just start now? If you could address that question and probably attempt the one of price versus economic value. But I'm sure there'll be other perspectives here.
So with regards to the backdating, it really depends on the methodology. And this is one of the challenges of the carbon market is because depending on which registry you want to put it under, there's multiple methodologies and then also there's the question of additionality. If the project that you're doing would have happened anyways without financial support from carbon credits, then you don't meet the additionality rule. However, under certain methodologies, though, if you can use carbon credits to help enhance it or improve it further to provide more impact, then some can go back one year, some even as much as two years, but typically nothing beyond that. So you can backdate it between one and two years if you can prove the additionality piece.
Okay. Philippe, did you want to try the question around price versus economic value?
Yeah, maybe one word about this. I mean, clearly, it comes back to what I was saying about what is a market. If we exchange these credits and if some people try to make profit on this, then there will be a difference between the value and the cost. But when we deal with big corporates and that we create and invest directly into projects, basically, all the money we get from the corporate goes to the project. There is no margin anywhere. I mean, we take management fees, but there is no margin. And I think this is the way it should work. We are clearly against any secondary market on these carbon credits.
Okay, there was a question, quite technical. I just hope that there's someone who is willing to take it. But it had to do with supply and demand and what either depends on composition of nature, inventory of... Did anyone catch that better than me? All right, okay, I don't know whether we'll go back to the question. But let's go to the third question that came. And I think, Gabriel, this was directed at you and it's a question of quality and why that's taking so long.
I'd like to say just one comment on price versus value, because I like that. Is the price of the carbon in a forest the same as the value of that standing forest? If that was your question, the answer is no. No, no, these are two different things. But carbon is a good metric because it is homogeneous. I mean, it's a fungible commodity, can be traded, you know what it is. So it's not the same, but it has a number of advantages that I would value. Why took so long? I guess that is the same question for Article Six. Why is taking so long? In the case of the Integrity Council, because the challenge really is not to put something that you know will produce a market that is waterproof. You can do that. The problem is that you lose the market if you do that now. I mean, the trick is to increase integrity while bringing the market with you. And that demands that we get to an agreement about what is good enough. And there are disparities of opinion out there about, you know, again, what would be really additional for renewable energy in a middle-income country? Permanence, that's a good example. When we had the discussion about permanence and for nature-based solutions is a key issue, we had people saying if it is less than 200 years, it doesn't count. We have some other people saying we have tipping points coming in maybe 30, 40 years. Do I care what happens in 200 years? Because if we don't make it in the next 50, probably it's irrelevant what is happening in 200, 500 years. Both arguments are very solid and there is a need to find a common ground. So it takes time. Again, I want to reemphasize because the challenge is not to put something out there that will produce a waterproof market. In the same manner that if you want a banking system that has zero bad loans, you probably end up lending money to people that don't need it. Okay? Because they have zero risk. But actually, the purpose of a banking system is to distribute capital to an economy and to reallocate. And some of these allocations may go wrong. So that's the challenge we will see coming in the next three, four years as we increase quality. And I would say that as a community, all of us involved in this discussion, all of us want to have something that is solid, that is scalable, that brings substantial flow of funding to developing countries. But we need to get a consensus about how we get there. Because at the moment, the relentless attack on carbon markets and some of those criticisms are very solid because the situation at the moment is not good. But what is really going on is that even companies that want to invest, that want to take the risk in investing into these markets are not doing that because of the public relation risks that they may face. So in summary, having that consensus is not that easy, takes time.
All right, yes. You want to add something? There was a question by the only gentleman who asked a question, actually. And he talked about, I think, transparency, but also carbon market schemes under Kyoto, if you could just...
Actually, I just wanted to add to the timeline. A lot of it has to do with the type of project it is, too, and when the impact happens, when the carbon reduction happens. So let's say you do like a nature-based restoration project. That can take three, four, five years. This is the beauty of technology because technology, the impact's much quicker. I'll show you an example. We have projects where you're plugging abandoned oil wells. Well, oil wells are emitting methane, which is 30 times more potent than CO2. And it takes a couple of weeks to seal the oil wells. Well, as soon as you do that, those emissions are gone. And so, yeah, you just have to go through the paperwork, all the proper documentation, everything. Once you get beyond that, you can actually start getting carbon credits within months as opposed to the years you're talking about because of the specific type of project. So that's a really key point that I just wanted to bring out.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am going to break my promise, which is perhaps a very bad thing to say at climate change discussion. But I have to end this here because we have one more session. Actually, I should say three concurrent sessions that are going to go on right after this. So I'm going to ask my panelists to just give some closing thoughts very quickly so that we go to the next sessions. that we go to the next sessions. Actually, in this very room, Tent A, we will have a discussion going on towards integrated early warning systems for the planet. In Tent B, we'll have building the business case for soil health. And in Tent C, we'll have the cost of climate and nature positive transitions from strategy to action. So you can also stand by for that. If I happen to be where you will be, I might keep my promise there. But let's get some closing thoughts. We start with you, Gabriel Labat. Some closing thoughts, please make it quick. 30 seconds would be great.
As a closing remark, if we are able to ensure integrity, scale will follow. If we ensure integrity, developing countries will be able to receive flow of funds that will meet social accounting and environmental standards that we consider to be solid. It's not an easy task to do. We have a few years to do that. And as a closing remark is that we are going through a period of everything, everywhere, all at once or all at one. We don't really have much time to lose, and carbon markets can play an important role in financing this transition.
Sunny, your closing thoughts, please.
Yeah, I think we overcomplicate things. And so if we use carbon credits as a financial tool to really incentivize people to do good, and you make it profitable to do good, that's how we're going to solve a lot of these issues. Make it profitable to do good, people will do good.
Professor Chang Li.
It took China about four years, five years to expand its national carbon trading market from energy industry to a couple of other sectors early this year. It take time to do more practice and learn lessons from the practices in the market. And the carbon trading market, it should be open, fair trade, and transparency with supporting accurate data and moderated and regulated under the certain regulations. So this is some experiences China gained in the past four, five years. I think it's also lessons learned from the China carbon trading market to all developing countries who want to develop their market. But for me, I think it should be market-based and it should be transparency.
Thank you, Mr. Kanduya.
Yeah, thank you very much. My closing remark is that we are ready to engage in carbon market space, and we must also take into consideration the benefits that go into communities, because that is where action is supposed to actually happen. Otherwise, you are ready, you are willing to engage, and you are ready for the market. Thank you.
Honorable Jenny Pitko.
Well, I want to emphasize the importance of thinking the whole ecosystem, not just the carbon. We need to tackle the crisis of natural loss and pollution as well, and we need to prevent that the carbon market would be just something that we would do and continue the lifestyle that we are doing right now, especially in the rich countries where we are consuming way too much natural resources. So I think that the principles of doing no significant harm is very important to include in this carbon market.
Thank you, Philip.
We are speaking a lot about a very tiny market. I mean, the ECM is 2 billion euros per year, it's very small. And I think if we want to scale it up, the very big question is demand, much more than supply, I think. How to convince companies to contribute? And I don't really see how to do it without a strong regulation.
Thank you, Tracy.
Yeah, I think there's clearly a lot to be done to rebuild the trust in carbon markets right now. And I think all of the panelists today have had some remarks and represent sectors that are working on different elements of that. And so I think that's really critical. There's kind of a multi-stakeholder effort to really rebuild trust in these markets, to get corporates back into the buy side, to offer high-quality carbon credits on the supply side. And I guess I would say also that it's really a very complex landscape. I know we don't want to overcomplicate it, but it is complicated. And we can even see that in the questions that we're getting from the audience today. So I think there's a lot to do around bringing people together to work through these challenges, to build up common understanding on terminologies, how these markets work, how to engage. So I think there's a lot that the people in this room and the organizations that we all represent can do on that front to help kind of collectively bring up understanding and dialogue on this topic.
Thank you very much. A big thank you to my guests, Philip Labat, Professor Chang Li, the Honorable Jenny Pitko, Tracy Lane, Philip Zawati, Augustine Kanduya, and Sunny Trinh. And I think you should clap for me. My name is Joe Aguirre. It's been great having you here. Now, at this moment, we're going to file into our various rooms. Those who are in the conversation about integrated early warning systems, that will be here. Then the conversation on soil health is going to be in Tent B, and the one about cost of nature, climate, nature positive transitions is going to be in Tent C. I hope you got that right. Okay, thank you very much, and please clap for yourself as well.